Excuse me, council. I'm gonna go ahead and start. Ms. Harris. Councilwoman Harris, we give her a prayer, please.
Thank you, Lord. Lord, we just wanna thank you this afternoon. You've been so good and you've been so kind. Lord, saturate our minds, our thoughts. Wrap your loving arms around us, oh God. Come into this meeting, oh God. Lord, do it today, God. Lord, we give you glory this afternoon. We give you honor, we give you praise. You've been so good, oh God. Bind the devils in our mind, bind the devils in our community, on our jobs, and each department, God. Lord, we thank you right now for what you're gonna do in West Memphis. West Memphis on a rise, God. We've been stagnated for fifty-some years. We need some new stuff, God. We need you to, Lord, to do something in West Memphis that's never been done before. Shake us up, God. Shake us up, oh God, and loosen us, God. Were we too tight? Lord, loosen us up. If we too loose, tighten us up, oh God. And bring that love that runs from heart to heart in this city, God. Cover this city with your blood, fill it with your love. Let your mercy abide in here, around here, and through us, oh God. Bless the minds of your peoples, oh God. Encourage our merit them, oh God. Strengthen them, oh God, and, Lord, the ones that work around them, God. Give us a leadership attitude, God. Lord, and you bless this place, oh God, the more, oh God. And we thank you right now, Lord, for your loving kindness and your goodness and your mercy, oh God. Continue to look on our police department, Lord. Pretend to protect them as they go through these holiday season, Lord. Lord, wrap your loving arms around the fire department. Lord, and look on our finance department. We need some help, oh God. We need some directions, oh God. Help us, Lord, to make some sound, found directions in this city, oh God. Lord, we thank you right now, 'cause we got good leadership and we got the body, God. So we need you, Lord, to saturate our minds, wrap us in your spirit. Let your word come forth in this building, oh God, right now, God. Do your work in each and every one of us, oh God. Give us that love that runs from heart to heart and breast to breast. Lord, we thank you right now. We thank you right now, Lord. You said we have now, 'cause we asking now. So we asking you, oh God, to help us, oh God. Help us, oh God. Help us to be the right leaders for this city, oh God. Help us to make the right decisions, oh God. Wrap us up, God. The ones that don't like it, Lord, Lord, you seal them up, oh God. Give them some love, oh God. Let them bend their knees more, God. Lord, we thank you right now, God. We thank you right now, oh God. In Jesus' name, I pray. Amen and praise God.
Let us place the flag, please.
I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Clerk, will you please call the real force?
Mayor McClain.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Absent.
City Treasurer Souter. Councilmember Bruce.
Here.
Councilmember Cat.
Here.
Councilmember Croon.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Hope.
Here.
Councilmember Hutchinson.
Here.
Councilmember Mohammed.
Present.
Councilmember Monday.
Here.
Councilmember Murray.
Here.
Councilmember Willis.
Here.
Ten out of ten present.
I call this meeting order. In the absence of the city attorney, I'll be reading the titles. Amendments, can I get a motion to second to approve the amendments?
So moved second.
All the people by? Opposed?
You made the motion.
I did.
You made the motion.
Mr. Croon made the second. I made the motion.
All right. We're gonna go to old business. It was your wishes during pre-council that we table this to our next meeting and tentatively meet Tuesday at 3:30 to go through the final details of questions you may have about this ordinance.
I make a motion, we do.
Second.
Councilman Cat and you had Councilman Willis, motion is second. All the people by? Opposed? It's tabled until next week. I would second read number ordinance to repeal ordinance number 876 of the City of West Memphis, amend in section two of the ordinance number 372 and for other purposes.
Mayor, if I may, this item and the next three that we read by title only.
Okay.
Can we get someone to give a little clarification on the one that we're reading currently?
May I ask for a second?
Second. Okay, Mr. Hold, second.
What is the about it dancing on Broadway, but it's only on the second reading, so you all are not voting on it today? All right. Councilman Kevin, you make that motion. Do you want to do it individually?
Mayor Alex is gonna make a motion that the next four items on the agenda. No, you're gonna make, well, yes, for the next three.
And then we get, okay, okay, I guess. Yeah, maybe one there, and then we'll do it again. It's gonna be seven. Councilman Cat made a motion.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Murray, second.
Mr. Murray, second, okay. The second reading of an ordinance providing for the levy of a one-fourth of one percent zero-point-two-five sales and use tax within the city of West Memphis, Arkansas, and prescribing other matters pertaining thereto. Ready for a second time and be back on the agenda in two weeks for you to vote. Where's also on the second reading, a reading of an ordinance called in a special election in the city of West Memphis, Arkansas, under questions of levying a citywide one-fourth of one cent point-two-five sales and use tax and prescribing other matters pertaining thereto. The second reading of an ordinance called in a special election in the city of West Memphis, Arkansas, under questions of issuing bonds under the amendment number 62 to the Constitution of the State of Arkansas for the purpose of financing all or a portion of the cost of capital improvements, levying a new three-fourth of one percent point-seven-five sales and use tax for the purpose of retiring such bonds and prescribing other matters pertaining thereto. It's been read for a second time as well and be on the agenda next week for us to vote Mr. Bowman, come forward, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, just for the record, when we voted to suspend the rules and put it on at second reading by title only, was there a vote with respect to that motion? I just wanted to clarify that there was a vote with respect to the suspension of the rules.
Well, no, I mean, we didn't suspend the rules.
Okay. For that, for that second reading, there was a motion and a second to suspend the rules.
There was a motion second to read by title only.
To read by title only.
If you're correct, there was not a vote of the council.
Could there be a vote of the council for the, for the record, please, with respect to that motion?
Make the motion a second.
The motion was to read those four items by title only.
Okay. Who seconded that? Mr. Murray?
Mr. Murray.
Okay, will you call the roll? Mr. Clerk?
What do we call, I'm sorry, what do we call the roll on?
This is clear. We're backtracking. We had a motion and a second to read these by title only. There was a motion and a second, but there was not an official vote of the entire council. We just went straight to reading, so this is to clear that issue up.
Okay.
Okay. You go with it.
I'm good. Yes, sir. Thank you all.
All right. Councilmember Bruce.
Yes.
Councilmember Cat.
Yes.
Councilmember Croon.
Pass.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Hope.
Pass.
Councilmember Hutchinson. Councilmember Hutchinson.
I say here, what am I saying? Yes.
Councilmember Mohammed.
Yes.
Councilmember Monday.
Yes.
Councilmember Murray.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Pass. Mr. Croon and Mr. Willis, do you wanna vote?
I would ask that you vote in the positive. This is, normally, we do not have a motion and a second to read an ordinance by title only the second time. We just read them. The reason this is being done is the legality of this particular nature. They feel that they're more comfortable with having that motion approved. And we will do the same thing on the third reading.
Well, I mean, you got, you got, you got seven fours and three passes, so that...
Well, I mean, you, if, it's enough, it's enough to pass. I just want you all to keep in mind, and I understand when we have votes on the council that we pass and we may have a conflict or something, like I know Mr. Cat may have a conflict or something, or it may be a family member involved, or it may be many reasons, and we expect you to abstain. But I think the people have elected us to vote yes or no, and just make a vote and go from there. But it was enough to pass that, that motion, so we're eight to two. It passes. Seven, seven.
Seven, three, yeah.
Who was it there?
That was Mr. Murray.
Mr. Murray. Oh, you passed?
I'm gonna say yes on it.
Okay. We're eight to two.
Can you listen?
It was an eight to two vote and passes. Thank you. We're going down to new business. I'm gonna ask Ms. Mohammed, will she make a motion?
Right, I'd like to make a motion that we read R1, R2 by title only.
Can Ms. Mohammed get a second?
Second.
Dr. Bruce. Ms. Mohammed and Dr. Bruce. A resolution awarding all city employees a $2,000 bonus.
It was made, there was not a vote cast. There was just a motion and a second. There was just a motion and a second, there was not a vote cast by the council, so you just start reading.
I thought it said all in favor, aye.
Okay. Let me, will you call the roll on that, that motion three by title alone?
Councilmember Bruce.
Yes.
Councilmember Cat.
Yes.
Councilmember Croon.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Hope.
Yes.
Councilmember Hutchinson.
Yes.
Councilmember Mohammed.
Yes.
Councilmember Monday.
Yes.
Councilmember Murray.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
We got ten out of ten that passes that we read by title only, R1 and R2. So R1, a resolution awarding all city employees a $2,000 bonus from the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security CARES Act pandemic relief funds. Got a motion and a second to approve.
I move.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Mohammed, does she?
Second.
Sounds like I heard it was the mayor.
Yeah, Ms. Mohammed and Mr. Monday? In discussion.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to ask that we amend the resolution after, in the title where it says "a resolution," I'd like to insert "at the mayor's discretion."
I would like to know why.
Well, I think the reason... Do you want me to answer?
Well, I, there's a motion and a second. At your discretion.
At the mayor's discretion, yes.
The rea, the reason why that I'm, I'm being told...
Can we do a second?
Mr. Hold, second. The reason, what, under my understanding is why it says, because you have people that have been here three months, people that have been here one week, you got people that's getting ready to leave Friday. So you don't have some type of restrictions within it, you're gonna pay a $2,000 check to every employer, regardless, they leaving next week, or they leaving, or they ain't been here for two or three weeks, and you got employers that been here for years during the work, during the pandemic. And that's the reason why that they want some type of restrictions on who all gets the $2,000.
Who would they want the restrictions?
That was, that was the question I had in pre-council, was define all. I mean, I didn't, I didn't know the definition of all.
And then we have part-time employees as well.
Right.
All right, now, Ms. Mohammed, that we drafted this resolution based on the budget hearing that we had. If these things were to be brought out, they should have been brought out at that particular time. Now, I heard this before we ever had this meeting, that someone was going to say, what about the ones who've just been here for a little while? Well, and I heard myself saying, common sense will tell you, if a person has just started working, they need the money more than the ones who've already been here, because they are already behind and trying to catch up. The money would do good. Now, I can see if this was money's coming out of the general fund, but it is not. The city has no dealings, it's not coming out of nothing from the city. This is from the pandemic money. And I don't know about how you all feel, but I'm speaking from humanity at this particular point. Now, let me just be clear, extremely clear, because I thought I was going to cry because of this little $2,000 that we are giving our employees, but I'm not going to cry. Instead, I'm going to be very, very bold. There's already enough bullying going around and enough dictating going around from what I'm hearing publicly already. Allow me to take my mask off, please.
Take it off.
Go ahead. 'Cause I really want to speak what's in my heart right now. It's $2,000. Whether you've been here one day or a hundred days.
Amen.
A thousand days.
Amen.
Our city employees deserve it. I'm not thinking about city council members. Could I use $2,000 extra dollars? I most certainly can. I mean, you have dubbed me, Mayor McClain, as the ghetto queen, because I live in a poor area of town. I'm proud to live where I live. The people where I live love me. They appreciate me being there. And since I am, and I have been dubbed as the ghetto queen, I've got to take care of all of our employees, because a lot of those employees live in what someone called the ghetto.
Go ahead. That's the radio.
I'm sorry. So I'm going to, I'm going to stick to my guns and not let Mayor McClain have any discretion over this, because he's not the purse string holder. We, as city council members, we have the discretion to give this money or to allocate this money. And I'm very, very concerned about all of our city employees. Yes, we do have some that are part-time, but when they come, they work as hard as anybody else.
That's right.
It's not city money. It's not coming from the budget. It's coming from the CARES Act money. The city will not lose anything. So my answer to this at his discretion will be known.
Ms. Mohammed, I, I got something on my head. One thing you, you said that was, I wanna get clear. You said I dubbed you as the ghetto queen. I never called you the...
You did. Oh, yes, sir. Sitting right there in my living room, and my daughter heard you.
I have never dubbed you as the ghetto queen.
My daughter heard you.
Okay, if your daughter can speak, I have never, I never hear no more.
And I can tell you the scenario around it. You were asking me about a corner right there on my street where those men hang out all of the time. And you said, do they keep it clean? I said, they don't give me any problem. As a matter of fact, they come to my house, knock on my door, and say, Ms. Mohammed, if you run us away from here, we're just old men, we'll have nowhere to go. I give them garbage bags, I give them paper grabbers, they keep it as clean as they can and used to. Well, that's all right, because you are the ghetto queen.
Okay, well, Ms. Mohammed.
I would never forget that.
At the, at the point...
Never, 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 never.
Okay, with the point that...
My daughter is sitting right in the next room, and she heard you.
I'll ask you, Ms. Mohammed, to let me speak now.
Speak, I'm finished. I'm finished.
At, at this point, like I said, we are gonna disagree on that, but when you talk about the, for the city employees, there's no one care more about my city employees than I do.
Our city employees.
Hold on, I haven't said, no, let me explain to you what I'm saying. 'Cause I'm here within fifty, sixty hours, which y'all hear a couple of meetings out of the month.
Oh, no.
So let me finish, so let me finish what I'm saying. I'm not, first of all, I didn't come up with this idea. You didn't call me, you apologized to me for not calling me, let me know what was going on, and I said, and I...
You asked me.
No, I asked you why I didn't. Can I finish, Ms. Mohammed? I'm not, I'm not gonna talk over you. I'll be quiet, you talk.
I'll finish, I'll finish.
You, well, you said, well, exactly what you said. So I want you, and it's upsetting me too, 'cause I want you to understand that I'm not against it. I didn't come up with a reason to say, well, let me do this in my discretion. The council did this. It was not me.
I didn't say...
So, no, so I want you to know, because you making seem like Marco should have the stretch, but I do think that if you making a point that everyone, whether they been here a one, one day, or they been here ten years, shouldn't make a difference, it does make the difference. Because it been some people here that had to stick it out during this pandemic, worked during this pandemic, and there people that hasn't been here no more than a week. So you make the difference, and say it's the same, it's not the same. Now, I'm not against not giving my people $2,000. I'm, we giving the, our city employees the money. I just don't want you to make it seem like I came up with this motion to, at the mayor's discretion, 'cause I did not, I did not come up with that.
Who came up with it?
I made the motion, ma'am.
He made the motion.
But you're the budget chair, why didn't you say that when we had the budget hearing last week? You're the budget chair.
'Cause I like to look at things and research it.
And you agreed to, you agreed to the recommendation.
I like to look and see what we've done in the past. I don't like making decisions at a spur of the moment, so I went back and looked at what we've done in the past.
It's CARES Act money. It's my, it's my city money.
Ma'am, I, I made a motion.
And sir, I don't accept your motion.
The council can vote on that now.
I know, I know. So between, between us, Mayor McClain, you called me on my job, asking me about this resolution.
You exactly right, I did.
That I sat down and put my heart into.
Can I just say something?
No, and put my heart into.
We need to leave this alone.
No, hold on.
Let me say, I wanna say, wait.
We on television.
And put my heart...
I want the city employees to get the money, so it ain't your heart, it's the city council as a whole gonna vote on giving the people. So it ain't, it's not one thing that one councilman gave you all. It gonna be that whatever this whole council body agree on, and I agree with the $2,000. I'm not beat hornin', I'm not against it. I'm hoping that they do pass it for you all. So not one individual who done that, it's gonna be everyone that on this council board, who if they vote yes, they give you all that money.
I'll continue. You called me on my job and asked me about the resolution. Moments after I brought it in, I don't know how the word got out so quickly, I had to hurry, I was going through with my daughter, trying to do many different things, I had to hurry and try to type this to get it here on time before noon of that particular Monday. Twenty minutes later, you called. How you got the word so quickly? I don't know, you're the mayor, you get the word. You said that some, some city council members wanted to know, why were they not included?
Can I answer a question for you? The reason why they were not included, 'cause just like you said, it ain't budget money, it's CARES Act money. So it really doesn't matter, because it's not the budget money, it's CARES Act. So if that's the case, if that's the case, Ms. Mohammed, you got a mayor that sit here and work sixty hours a week with these men and women, and you got council people that come here every day like yourself and work with the city employees, so if, it's your point, if it's not budget money and it just CARES Act money, if they wanted it, if I wanted it, it shouldn't be no big deal, whether I could give it or not.
And that is what you said, because you said, I want my $2,000, is what you said to me.
I, I disagree with you.
You did say that. I want my $2,000, is what you said.
I'm ready to call for a vote.
Call for the vote.
Wait, we need to get a second, one second.
Mr. Hope, Mr. Hope.
Voting on to the city employees, a $2,000 raise, all of them.
Ms. Mohammed, y'all need to take this in the back room, that's enough of this.
Excuse.
It's motion made right now, on what Tracy made, the motion and second, so you all, you all go here and call, Ms. Paul, you, you call the roll on that motion that Tracy and Mr. Hope made.
Can we repeat the motion?
Or what, 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 repeat the motion?
Your motion is after the, in the shortening the title, "A Resolution," insert the words, "at the mayor's discretion."
You call the roll.
Okay. Councilmember Bruce.
No.
Councilmember Cat.
Yes.
Councilmember Croon. Councilmember Croon.
Yes.
Councilmember...
Excuse me, I will re, pull it back and say no.
Okay. Councilmember Croon, vote no. Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris, yes.
Yes.
You clear on the motion?
Yes.
I just had to make sure everybody's clear.
Yes.
All right, Council, Councilmember Harris, vote yes. Councilmember Hope?
Yes.
Councilmember Hope, vote yes. Councilmember Hutchinson?
Pass.
Councilmember, pass.
Come back to me, pass.
Councilmember Mohammed?
No.
Councilmember Monday?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
No.
Councilmember Willis?
No.
Okay, may you get, you get one, two, three, four no's.
Yeah, you go back to Ms. Hutchinson.
Okay, Ms. Hutchinson, you, you voting? Are you voting?
Uh, you asked us to say.
Huh? She's the thing. Councilmember Bruce, you got one, two, three, four no's. One, two, three passes.
I'm so confused at this one.
Then the motion failed.
Yes.
That motion failed. Now we go back to the original motion by Ms. Mohammed and Dr. Bruce.
Okay, I, I have something I want to say. And basically, I guess, I'm, I'm glad to see that we're getting ready to hopefully pass this resolution, so the employees can get this money. And if y'all recall, probably about four months, well, I guess, four weeks ago, a month or two, I talked about this. And so it was said that they didn't really know how much money was there. But as a council, we have to sit down and start looking at things to see where and what, what money is where. That's a must. We cannot make intelligent decisions on how to do different things if we don't have all the information. So yes, I'm for it, and I think everybody deserves it. And when I say that, you have to think about nurses get bu, uh, bonuses before they even start. Now, we are in the Delta, and every employee that's working here in this city deserves, and, and I'm sure need this money.[1566.38] Let's do the right thing. You, you can't always give them raises. But we should at least give them the bonuses. I don't care if they leaving or not. If they worked during this pandemic and they're leaving tomorrow, they still deserve that, that funding. And that's all I'm gonna say.
I think.
Are you making the motion?
No, we already hit a motion.
Who motion?
Ms. Mohammed made the motion and Dr. Bruce seconded and then this motion made.
So did the mo.
Turn the vote, let's call the vote.
You said what?
I was gonna say, did the motion pass or fail that we?
No, that motion, it, it passed. That, the first one passed. Yeah.
I know, but then Tracy made the motion to.
That one failed.
The amendment failed, okay.
What this is, if we're trying to, is the mayor gonna disperse the funds or is the city council? And that's, that's the two issues we're working at.
And the one for the mayor to do it fail. So now it's back on to original, uh.
Y'all wanna be in control of this first thing to fund.
We're gonna vote.
They give them.
Okay.
Yes.
Alright, I'm with y'all now.
That's all we're doing right now, discussing on how's gonna, who's gonna disperse this fund.
This, his, the motion on this one has to go through before we vote for the other one.
No, it's time to vote. It's time to vote with this resolution.
Excuse, excuse me one minute. Uh, McClerk, she's trying to take the minutes, but there's too much motion going on, talking, so she's getting confused. So if you don't mind, one of the ten, please. Go ahead.
You gonna call the vote?
Sure, there not any more discussion?
We're voting on the resolution.
On the resolution, yeah.
As presented.
Yeah, we vote on the resolution to get employees $2,000.
That means all, all.
That mean, that mean, that mean the one that just started today and the one that leaving next week.
Right.
And everybody in between, that's everybody. Alright.
Okay.
Want me to call it?
Mayor, did you say it was 385 employees involved with this?
Do this include part-time?
I'm gonna make sure of their amount.
Yes, it is. I, I think.
We agree to part-time?
I think that will be Mohammed's intention, part-time as well.
384 employees.
It's that part-time. I wanna get a clearance from Ms. Mohammed.
All employees.
All the floor.
Okay.
All the floor, okay.
Oh, everybody.
Everybody. Nah, you hear that? Call her up.
Councilmember Bruce?
Yes.
Councilmember Cat?
No.
Councilmember Crone?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Y'all clear that for me. We, what we're voting on now, that's so much confusing.
The red news, the red news, that's your pass.
You giving everybody $2,000, right? Yes.
That, the employees.
That's the employees.
All employees.
Right, yes.
Okay, Councilmember Harris, vote yes. Councilmember Hope?
Yes.
Councilmember Hope, vote yes. Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson, vote yes. Councilmember Mohammed?
Yes, yes, yes.
Councilmember Hope, vote yes. Councilmember Monday?
Yeah.
Councilmember Monday, vote yes. Councilmember Mary?
Yes.
Councilmember Mary, vote yes. Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis, vote yes. Nine out of 10.
Yeah, nine out of 10 that voted. Congratulations, you all get the $2,000 budget. Uh, Mr. Clark, would you give that resolution a number?
Okay, it's gonna be, the resolution number of 2260.
2260. Alright. R2, I'm gonna go to R2. A resolution approving a revision of the 2021 budget. Uh, budget chair, you wanna give a small explanation on that real quick?
Yes, sir. The funds that were received, the $3 million, like I say, has been received by the city, but has not been incorporated into the budget. We need permission from the council to do that. The $671,000 was not originally budgeted. Uh, it is, this is the work that needs to be performed in order to get a bit pack out and get the numbers back for the parks project that citizens voted on, the $9 million and $50,000. To give you the authority to actually pay these funds out. So we need council approval on that.
Alright, you hear that? Can I get a motion this second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Clark, will you call the roll in there as well?
Alright. Councilmember Bruce?
Yes.
Councilmember Cat?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Hope?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mohammed?
Yes.
Councilmember Monday?
Yes.
Councilmember Mary?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
We have 10 out of 10 that pass. So would you give that resolution a number, please?
It's gonna be 2261.
2261. Permission request, permission authorizing the mayor to execute a professional service agreement with HDR Engineering Incorporated for engineering services at the Port of West Memphis with the agreement having been approved by the West Memphis Port Authority and referred to the city council. The agreement amount is $274,000 and would be paid from the Port Authority account from the Office of Economic Development. Uh, we have Ms. Mallory to come up a little early and give a explanation, explanation. Uh, the motion is second to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All favor by?
Aye.
Opposed? Who made that motion?
God, Dick.
Councilmember, who's second? Ms. Harris.
Harris second.
Alright, all the favor by?
Aye.
Opposed? It passed. Uh, committee reports, personnel?
Yes, sir, uh, mayor. The personnel, personnel committee met on October 13th. The agenda included, uh, the discussion of the $200 vaccination, vaccination bonus. Staff was advised that approximately 230 employees receive checks and to be expecting the next round of checks in the month of November. Next, we discussed, uh, members were informed about the flu shot. They'll be given sometime in November and those shots will be administered through East Arkansas. So be, um, looking for more information on that. The meeting also, um, concluded information on members that, that, for the supplies, I'm sorry, of the PPP supplies. They are limited, but if you should need more supplies, ordering, uh, will be done through our purchasing agent, Mr. Kenneth Johnson. Director Coleman informed, informed members that open enrollment will be in the second week of December and that it is vital for personal information to be updated to make the process go smoothly. A brief discussion of the employee of the year, uh, Mr. Kenneth Johnson, and whom we congratulate again. Uh, we recognized him in the last council meeting. Community outreach discussed the recent city trunk or treat that, um, went by, to my understanding, extremely well. And then lastly, the announcements were the emergency management team will be hosting a fire extinguishing training. And I think that has already happened. Mind you, I'm giving notes, uh, from several weeks ago. So some of these, some of these things have already happened. Open discussion was had, I'm not gonna read all this, I'm sorry. Uh, open discussion, open, open discussion was had and concluded. And then the meeting was concluded at approximately 12:57 and that's the end of the personnel. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hudson, can I, I missed the first part of something about flu shots or?
Okay. Let's see, let me go back to the flu shots. And I'm, I'm, I'm reading just my agenda updates. This is what we, we discussed, uh, on October. Members were informed to be expecting more information regarding flu shots, which will be held sometime in November. East Arkansas will be administering the shots because of the positive interactions the city has had with the facility previous years. So for that, Council Crone, I think we pretty much was just, we, we were putting out the fact that flu shots will be, you know, given in November.
Did we tell you?
Yes, sir. Please come to the podium, come to the podium, Ms. Coleman, thank you, which would be the co-chair. I, I didn't see you back there, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon. Uh, just flu shots, just real quick, will be administered tomorrow at the utilities training, uh, facility. And it'll be from 10 to 12. Um, I believe you all should have those forms, um, uh, you know, for you all to fill out. Yes, yes, let me see that. Thank you, sir. But you all should have these forms to fill out and just bring those, um, along with you to the, uh, to the clinic. That's if you would like to get one for tomorrow. But they are tomorrow from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. Okay. Any questions regarding flu shots?
I'm a, I'm a day late and a dollar short. I got mine yesterday.
Alright, alright, thank you.
But I'm glad we're doing this.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. And just to thank you and your staff for yesterday, uh, the personnel committee, all of the, uh, department heads that came out on yesterday, thank you all so much. Uh, it was exactly what we intended. We intend to continue those conversations. Um, I, and like I, and I, I, I had the opportunity to speak with different individuals, different employees, different department heads. We're listening and, and that's what's most important. In spite of maybe what you sometimes see, we, we are listening and it, and it matters. So beginning of those conversations were very, uh, much needed and I appreciate each person that, uh, participated on yesterday. That mayor concludes the personnel committee minutes.
Councilwoman Hudson, will you proceed with A and P?
I certain the will, sir. As you all have in front of you, the West Memphis Advertising and Promotion Commission met on October 20th. Here are the highlights. The minutes were presented from the September 15th A and P, which were passed unanimously. Under the financial report, Jim Jackson presented to the commission the proposed 2022 budget. Commissioner Scott Ferguson made the motion to present the 2022, 2022 budget to the West Memphis City Council for approval. Commissioner Reinhardt seconded the motion and it was passed. Old business, warehouse space. Again, Jim Jackson informed the commission that the warehouse project was still moving forward, that it would be around 2,500 square feet. And there would be enough room for extra parking space, uh, and it's will may be able to be striped. Stripped like. Uh, under Christmas decoration bids, one bid came in, $48,300 by Festive Designs. Decorations will begin going up soon. Under new business, Jim Jackson gave information that in light of vaccinations, that the capacity limits will be raised for the Eugene Wood Civic Center and the Civic Auditorium. Commissioner Scott Ferguson made a motion to raise the limit from 150 to 300 for the Eugene Woods Civic Center and that the Civic Auditorium be raised from 250 to 500 people. Commissioner Mike Patel seconded the motion and it was passed unanimously. Last, celebration incentive concert. Jim Jackson proposed that a concert be held in the Civic City, Civic Auditorium. That's a tongue twist, the six, the, the, civic auditorium, where those that show their vaccination cards will be allowed to attend for free. Uh, multiple ideas were discussed on how this type of event should take place, as well as how we could promote the event to the citizens of West Memphis. Commissioner Scott Ferguson made a motion to use up to $20,000 as a raffle lottery that would break down where 20 people would, would receive $1,000 during a celebration incentive event. For those that have been fully vaccinated by a certain date, that would be later determined by the A and P commission. Of course, that motion was seconded, uh, unanimously. The meeting adjourned at 5:10 with no more business to attend to. And that mayor concludes my report for our A and P commission.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Hudson. Uh, we're gonna go to police.
Yes, sir, mayor, the police. And please, I apologize for my emotions. This is just something that was so near and dear to my heart and I ask that you please forgive me and have mercy on me for my outburst on today. The police commission met on November 1st at 12:15 p.m. The narrative by Chief Pope. His theme is the good news in the West Memphis Police Department. There was a body dump on Mount City Road, white male. Suspects from Memphis have been apprehended. The city of West Memphis will handle the case as the suspects were all from Memphis and we will just probably charge them with, uh, illegal dumping of a corpse. The suspect at the Shell gas station shooting has been apprehended. He was apprehended in Minnesota and the young lady who was shot, of course, I know that family. And of course, she did a great job in describing and giving information to help lead to that apprehension of the suspect. Chief Pope has instituted a special enforcement zero tolerance unit. There will be three additional officers from each shift on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday to work overtime to help combat the crime here in the city of West Memphis. Through this effort, this past weekend, there were 27 felony arrests, correct me if I'm incorrect, 18 misdemeanor arrests, 60 doses of hydrochloroza, za, zel, is that right? Uh, I put spell in here because I didn't have a spell. 51 tablets of ecstasy, 67 grams of ecstasy, 14 ounces of marijuana, 15 doses of tramadol, 1.5 grams of meth, 5 ounces of cocaine and much more were confiscated through this concerted effort. On Sunday, October 31st, the police department held its first Halloween safety, safety bash. There were over 600 hamburgers and hot dogs given out. There were also 500 goodie bags of candy and treats. Those participating in this effort were police officers, West Memphis cadets, police secretaries, dispatchers, clerks, Mayor Marco McClint, city councilperson Lorraine Mohammed, and city councilman Willis Monday, who also donated candy. All food and candy was donated by businesses and citizens of West Memphis. Chief Pope also, uh, was also instrumental in getting the slingshot motorcycle riders from Memphis to participate in this event. Mayor McClint and Chief Pope presented Lieutenant Dyke, who retired after 27 years of service, a plaque and he was given his service gun. The retirement celebration ended with a fish fry. And that ends my report.
Councilmember Cat, did you want to speak on the budget?
Sir, the, all the matters stayed addressed. They've already been handled by the council today.
Okay. I have no appointments. I do have a couple presentations. First off, I wanna start, during this pandemic, also, there have been some workers that have really contributed to our city and our county and just all over. They was, um, they worked extremely hard, was, uh, they were overlooked sometime. They, uh, I, I would also call them essential. And that was the, uh, women and gentlemen at the Arkansas Workforce Division. I would recognize their service, uh, at the Arkansas Work Service by saying, whereas the executive branch, mayor office of the city of West Memphis would like to congratulate the workers of the state of Arkansas Workforce Division in West Memphis for outstanding services rendered to the citizens of West Memphis and this county. Whereas the Workforce Division team under the leadership of local manager, Dejeanette Smith, has been very dedicated and productive in working through the pandemic and other challenging times. They have endured major challenges to help persons in need of assistance with various employment opportunities. Whereas the Arkansas Workforce Division services are being provided through this state agency, which does not earn a profit and does not measure success by business growth and expenses, but are 99% federally funded with tax dollars. And the Arkansas Workforce Division provide individuals with tools they need to enhance and sustain their employability. And through the education and training, skill training offered to job seekers, employers, and reducing hidden costs associated with lost production time and turnover rates by hiring qualified workers. Whereas the executive branch would like to personally commend the local office manager, Ms. Dejeanette Smith, the T A N F supervisor, Sandra Atwater, case managers, correct me if I said this wrong now, uh, Tilia Adams, Anita Ringold, and Stephanie Lee, unemployment specialist, Richard Shackelford, and Sandrika Brent, and also employment specialist and business team affiliate, Tamika Conway, for their professionalism in dealing with all constituents of West Memphis and Quitney County. Now therefore, now therefore, I, Mayor Marco McClint of the city of West Memphis, appreciate their efforts and work performed by the state of Arkansas Workforce Division in Arkansas. And urge the citizens of West Memphis to please get on special recognition on this day of the state of Arkansas Workforce Division of the city of West Memphis rendered. These beautiful ladies are here today, will you join them on stage?
Hello, everyone. I just wanna personally, good afternoon. I see a lot of familiar faces. I hope you all can hear me. I definitely wanna take time out to thank the mayor for recognizing us at the West Memphis Workforce Center. I would like to thank some of my staff that are here today. And as he stated, we definitely worked tremendously hard during the pandemic for the past one and a half to take care of the citizens of Quitney County, as well as Shelby County and the state of Mississippi. We worked tireless hours to ensure that the citizens were able to receive their unemployment insurance benefits, the stimulus benefits. I mean, we were all over the place with trying to accommodate the sheer volume of individuals that were coming to the workforce center. And not only were we taking care of the citizens, we were also servicing employers. We deal with a large, massive amount of employers here in Quitney County, such as Keno, Travis Dollar. We deal with, with the sheer volume of employers in Shelby County area. So we worked a lot of hours to take care, again, of the citizens. Now, things have kinda slowed down, but we still are in the process of accommodating employers to try to fill vacant positions. There, there, there's an issue with accommodating a lot of vacant position with the number of employers. So if you all know of anyone that need work, be sure to refer them to the workforce center because we got a lot of openings, uh, uh, in both small businesses and some of the large industries in the area. So we, we have a lot of projects that we have in place to try to fill those gaps that employers are facing with trying to, uh, fill those positions. So again, we, I, I thank the staff, the leadership of Ms. Atwater and some of my staff when I was not able to, to be present. And again, if, if you guys know of anyone that's looking for work, let them know that we at the workforce center were located on the campus of ASU Missoula. I see a lot of familiar faces, but we're there to service them and the employers here in the area. So. So we're oftentimes seen as the unsung heroes. So we really appreciate this Mayor McClinton because, um, we didn't get any recognition. So this is really a blessing on today. Thank you all so much.
I also have a second presentation, I'm gonna ask Chief Pope, will he join me, please? And Mr. Lieutenant Dykes, will you come forward?
All right.
Once again, I wanna thank Lieutenant Dyke for serving with the City of West Memphis after twenty-seven years of dedication and loyalty and giving his, well, placing his life on the line every day for the citizens of West Memphis. I want to say thank you for your commitment and I want to give you recognition and recognition of the service of the City of West Memphis and, uh, West Memphis Police Department. We would like to congratulate you on your retirement. You showed your dedication and loyalty to the city and the citizens of our community from April of nineteen ninety-four to October of twenty twenty-one and we would like to acknowledge your twenty-seven years of service. Congratulations on your retirement and we wish you the best of luck in all your future endeavors. Now therefore, I, Mayor Marco McClinton of the City of West Memphis do hereby formally recognize you and urge all citizens of the City of West Memphis to give you special recognition to Lieutenant Dyke and his accomplishments. Thank you. Chief, chief also has some awards, I'm gonna name, uh, you know.
Good afternoon, everyone. First off, I'd like to thank, thank the mayor and the city council for this opportunity to come and make a special presentation to some of the men and women who served the West Memphis Police Department and the citizens of West Memphis. Uh, normally we give out awards for Officer of the Month, that type, but over the course of the last month, the men and women that sit out here in this audience and those who are on the street now, they have been doing an outstanding job, they've been working very hard, tireless hours and resourceful in. Uh, as Ms. Muhammad alluded to, we have made a substantial amount of arrests. We have, uh, seized over twenty-some weapons. Uh, the Narcotics Division has seized a substantial amount of drugs. So what I decided to do for the month of October is I wanna recognize all divisions for their hard work and outstanding hard work for the City of West Memphis, starting out with my Criminal Justice Division, SEED. As we alluded to, we have had a couple of serious, um, robberies, shootings and those, I'm here today to announce to you that those cases have been closed or solved because of the work and dedication of the men and detective units of West Memphis Police Department. So for the month of October, I recognize SEED, Division of the Month. Also, Moses Walker come up and take this award, be placed into the, uh, SEED's, uh, office for detectives.
Um, the position I'm in in criminal investigations, uh, the main thing is, is that we all be professional, we do our jobs and we investigate the crimes as they come across our desk, but also to advocate for my detectives and they've been working exceptionally hard, uh, lately and doing a great job, so we appreciate the recognition.
Next division I'd like to recognize would be our Patrol Division. I'd like for Captain Presley to come up and accept this award for the men and women of Patrol Division.
Um, I'm accepting this award for the guys that's out there beating the street every day. This is not for me, this is not for, you know, us standing up here, this is for those guys, they're working their tail end off. We are short, everybody knows that and they're still going strong, they're not slowing down. So thank y'all.
Next division I'd like to recognize would be our Narcotics Division. Uh, they're tasked with a lot of things that I can't speak of. They're doing an outstanding job, but of course, you know, we have, uh, the Tennessee, I mean, the Drug Task Force here, uh, Arkansas. I'd like to have Lieutenant Brett Bradley come and receive this award.
Uh, just to reiterate what Captain Presley said, this is not about me, it's about the guys. I got a four-man unit and they work day and night, endless, uh, so gotta give it to them. Thank y'all.
The lifeline of the West Memphis Police Department is our dispatchers. I'd like to recommend that we do all the hard work, we receive all the calls. Uh, they stand the test, they, uh, take the calls, they now want calls, they dispatch officers to the scene and they often get forgotten, uh, division that nobody actually sees, but you hear their voices on the phones and radios. So I would like for, uh, Major, I'd like to accept this award for the dispatchers. Okay, over the course of the last week, I knew you all, everybody knows about the shooting that took place at the Shell gas station. Um, and because of the hard work and dedication and the training that also see for West Memphis Police Department, uh, when they made the scene, uh, the female victim was in distress and they performed life-saving skills that I believe helped save her life. And I want to, uh, give out three life-saving awards to those also made the scene, starting out with Officer Gregory Bowman. Next life-saving award goes to Officer Ismael Clay. And last but certainly not least, the next life-saving award goes out to Sergeant Kevin Joy. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
Congratulations, everybody.
I thank all of our officers and our emergency workers. Announcements, uh, we have a flu shot clinic tomorrow at twelve o'clock at the Utilities Department. Yes. Also, we have another meeting at Weaver this Tuesday, Weaver Elementary this Tuesday at six PM. I had no citizen request, were there anything, anyone that's need, any councilman need to add?
Uh, I just want to, everyone, please don't forget, uh, on eleven eleven that we would have the veteran parade here in West Memphis. Like I say, it's been fifty-plus years since we've had a veteran, acknowledged our veteran here in the City of West Memphis, Creighton County, really. Thank you.
Were there any other announcements? Here none, I intend a motion to dismiss. Affirmative. Opposed?